My pleasure, please. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, one God, and of this all, with liberty, justice, and
Victor, will you do a little prayer, please?
Yes.
Father, on heaven, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've allowed us to be in today. We thank you for allowing us to come into a quorum. We thank you for every single body in that's involved in the city of Santa Luis Valley. We thank you for their protection, but we ask for grace and mercy upon them. In my name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Victor. Sarah, local, please.
Counselor Howard.
Here.
Counselor Renz.
Here.
Counselor Watson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sigala.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
Of course, Mr. Clarence.
Okay, do we have any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, there will be a modification. H one is being moved tonight from the agenda to public hearings.
So moved. That has been moved and seconded to modify the agenda to remove public hearings. H one, community developed block grant application to the state of Colorado Department of Local Affairs, CDBG, Barnes or intended provide public facility improvements. Is there any discussion? Sarah?
Lieutenant Howard.
Yes.
Counselor Renz.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Sigala.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Motion carries to modify the agenda and remove H one.
Day approval consent agenda and minutes of regular meeting from August seventh, and approval of counts payable. So moved. Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, but minutes of regular meeting from August seventh, twenty twenty five, and approval of accounts payable. Any discussion? Sarah?
Lieutenant Howard.
Yes.
Counselor Renz.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Sigala.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda. Sorry.
It's all right. You're doing fine. Proclamation, communications, and appointments. Proclamation for overdose awareness month. Do you like to present that to us?
Yes, I would like to.
I would like that. We've been waiting for you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Stand up and state your name, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Council, for having me. My name is Kate Martinez. I'm representing San Luis Valley Behavioral Health Group tonight, and I do want to apologize for not being here at the seventh meeting. There was a miscommunication in our office, so I deeply appreciate your guys' flexibility and understanding. Whereas overdose deaths continue to impact individuals and families throughout Santa Luis Valley and across Colorado San Luis Valley, regardless of age, race, gender, or background. And whereas overdose is now a leading cause of preventable death in the San Luis Valley's rural nature, economic challenges, and stigma around substance use have further exasperated this public health crisis. And whereas many of these deaths are preventable and increasing access to compassionate, nonjudgmental treatment, harm reduction services, and community education are key strategies to saving lives. And whereas San Luis Valley Behavioral Health Group and its regional partners are dedicated to reducing overdose deaths by providing substance use treatment, recovery support, and harm reduction services, including naloxone distribution and education throughout the six counties of the San Luis Valley. And whereas stigma remains one of the greatest barriers to people seeking help, leading to many to struggle in silence rather than accessing life-saving care. And whereas August is recognized globally as overdose awareness month, offering an opportunity to honor those lost, support those who grieve, and raise awareness about overdose prevention strategies, save lives in our communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Santa Luis, Colorado does hereby proclaim August twenty twenty five as overdose awareness month in Santa Luis and calls upon all citizens, businesses, schools, and community organizations to learn the facts, carry naloxone, reduce stigma, and support recovery and prevention efforts. In witness whereof, I have her on to set my hand and cause. I don't think I have the ability to still move on to this, but.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm going to assume you're doing the max one, too.
The suicide prevention.
Yes.
Also, yes. Recognizing suicide or September as suicide prevention and awareness month. Whereas suicide is a leading cause of death across Colorado and profoundly affects individuals, families, and communities in Santa Luis Valley. And whereas rural areas like the San Luis Valley face unique challenges, including isolation, limited access to care, economic stress, and cultural stigma that increase suicidal risk and reduce help-seeking behavior. And whereas every life lost to suicide is one too many, and too many suicides are preventable with timely intervention, access to mental health services, and a community culture of understanding and support. And whereas San Luis Valley Behavioral Health Group alongside its partners works daily to provide crisis services, counseling, peer support, and community education aimed at reducing suicide risk and offering hope to those in need. And whereas reducing the stigma surrounding mental health and suicide is essential so that individuals feel safe and supported to ask for help without fear of shame or judgment. And whereas September is nationally recognized as suicide prevention and awareness month, providing an opportunity to remember those we have lost, supports survivors of suicide loss, and reaffirm our commitment to saving lives through education, awareness, and compassionate action. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Santa Luis, Colorado does hereby proclaim September twenty twenty five as suicide prevention and awareness month in Santa Luis and encourages all citizens to educate themselves about suicide warnings, foster supportive connections, and help break the stigma that prevents too many from seeking the care they need. In witness whereof, I have her on to set my hand and cross the seal of Santa Luis to be affixed on this day.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll take them back from you so I can take care of them for you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. I actually appreciate it.
Thank you, the one of you.
Can we need to take a vote that you guys adopt, please?
Yes. Somebody needs to make a motion for that. I make a motion to adopt those. What is for?
Look at the.
I make a motion to adopt the proclamation template recognized in August as overdose awareness month. And also motion the proclamation template recognized in September as suicide prevention and awareness month. Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve the proclamation template for recognizing recognizing August as overdose awareness month. And also proclamation template for recognizing September as suicide prevention and awareness. Is there any discussion? Sarah?
Counselor Howard.
Yes.
Counselor Renz.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sigala.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Motion carries to approve suicide prevention and awareness month as well as the proclamation for overdose awareness month.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks.
Sure. Thank you for being here. Yeah. Okay, we will move on to swearing in Officer Briscoe Moats.
Evening, sir. All right, sir, please, right hand. Be after me. I, Briscoe Moats.
Uh, Briscoe Moats.
Who saw him swear right now. He was obviously following his letter in front of him under the penalty of burglary, under the penalty of burglary. But I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the state of Colorado, the city of Santa Luis, the city of Santa Luis, the charter and ordinances, the city of Santa Luis, the charter and ordinances. And I will faithfully perform the duties of police officer that I will faithfully perform the duties of police officer to which I have been appointed, which I have been appointed, and upon which I am without limits. And upon which I am about to enter the home today. So, yeah. Congratulations.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to citizen comments. City Council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please let me check comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this same meeting. Mine?
Our person up here.
Have her proxy, didn't you?
No, not yet. I'm going to ask her for it, though. And there's no paper, but the Monty show, I live on Henderson. Wanted to thank Officer Golden. Did an awesome job last night at Neighborhood Watch. And with that in mind, I'd like to invite all of y'all next month. It's the seventeenth, six P M. At the library. And I think it'd be great if the council would get behind it. Because it's amazing the numbers that were presented last night that happened in our little burke. And in the county. I was surprised. Also, again, I want to commend our street people. And what are they called? That are done cleaning up the ditches and stuff. It's fantastic.
Public Works.
Public Works. Thank you. It's they've really done a lot of good work this summer. They finished Tuxley today. All the equipment's gone out of the street now. So it's but it's and they're cleaning the making it safer on the streets. So a big shout out to them for doing a good job. And then we can run here in a minute. Some of it's getting up there.
Didn't you say that was the seventeenth at six P M?
Yes, seventeenth September at the library downstairs. Nobody can leave when it's DJ's turn to come up. Any other citizen comments? Marie? Okay. Scheduled appearances? We have none?
Sorry. Not this week.
That's quite all right. Um, well, I guess we will move on to staff proposals, reports, and actions. Recreation. Don't tank Durban.
It's pretty good. I'm gonna give you that one. Give you that one. So for recreation, we've had the, and we mentioned it's parks, more parks than recreation. We've had the courts, the tennis courts are now completed. They are done. The ladies played tennis today, and I didn't tell Gigi yet, but they said the courts look beautiful. And so. Amen. To that, there was someone that played on last night as well, too, and then really enjoyed playing on. So they were so much better than what they were before. So if you all are tennis players, you need to get out there and place tennis on a brand new looking tennis courts. And that we're going to fix the nets here during this week. We just had to have them up and ready for Thursday. And so.
And they also have.
And they also have pickleball. Really look. So play pickleball. They have, both sides have a pickleball court on them. So you can play pickleball as well. So they really look good, though. So go out and check them out. As he said, now they look really good.
Was he said tennis courts right by the golf course there?
Yes. I'm sorry, tennis courts right by the golf course. Yeah, so they really look rough. And Kate Martinez, too. She is also helping us as a grant writer in that for our new fields and that she is our grant writer and helping us out. Look for grants as well as writing grants for us. So. But she escaped too quick and that. So. Right now, as far as recreation goes, we are doing registration for football. Got tackle football going on third, fourth grade, fifth and sixth, as well as flag football, and we also have volleyball, third, fourth grade, fifth and sixth grade. It's going great. Lots of kids out there. My back, the park was emptied and then they rebuilt again. Coaches put them under the pavilion and that and then came back down for practice. So. So kids are having fun hopefully in football, volleyball. And we've also have cheer going on right now and that noble cheer for football, basketball, and that as well as volleyball. That's it for recreation. Any questions from Don't Tank? Is it Don't Tank?
Don't Tank Durban.
I'll be right after the May.
I will leave that just to make sure you're there.
What day is that? Think I'm out of town.
Oh, thank you. Kids connected.
Good evening, Council. Um, so we just started the after, we didn't just start last week. It was our first week of the after-school program. So we're back at reduced normal hours. It's the greatest two-hour after-school. But we, I didn't realize until we actually started full swing that how many of our, how many fifth graders we had last year? So our green room, which usually has the highest amount of kids in it, is a lot lower than normal. We're seeing between thirty-five, well, about between thirty and thirty-five each day right now after school. My blue room kiddos, which is kindergarten through second, we're about ninety percent brand-new children. Yeah, I graduated, I think I graduated with like fourteen second graders into the third through fifth grade room last year. So they're, they're really being challenged in there with those third graders. But I got brand-new kindergarteners, first graders, and second graders that are challenging, challenging me just as equal. So. Um, that is really all that we have going on. We are actively doing interviews as applicants come in. We are looking at filling three positions. Technically, I have two open right now. I'll have a third one within the next few weeks because we, one of my staff members is leaving us. So. No, anybody send them my way. We also found a workaround with some of the requirements, that three months of verifiable experience. So we can hire people without the experience and train them kind of like on a trial basis. We're still working, wording out so it can get out. But we can start interviewing those candidates as well. That was really all I have for you. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Just know in your heart, you're leading, you're leading our future. So anything in the next ten, fifteen years in Santa Luis?
That's all you.
I'll have a statue. I love it. I'm pretty scared. You're like, she did it all.
Yeah, so if the president comes out of here and I send your statue, too. So.
Sky high. You can stay there.
Yeah, I'll discover it's my before.
And you're okay. DJ?
Good evening, guys. Sorry about the change in the CBDG. I know you guys really want to have a public hearing tonight. We verified that whether or not it would be an eligible project, and we were told it was not. So that's why we pulled it off the thing. So we started working because I had a very short timeline while we verified eligibility. And in order to eat all the publishing, we had to get it out. So. Sorry, I know you were excited about that. So anyway, other than that, nuisance code revision, we're working on revising the nuisance code. We're collaborating with the police department, city clerk, court clerk, city manager, and city attorney to make sure that when we revise it, it's completely what all the different departments need to enforce our codes. So we're going through and doing that. We sat down with staff this last week. And then we're going to sit down with probably about another two weeks with city attorney as well as staff again and kind of revise it so that we can try to get in front of you guys, either for a work session or maybe just pass it. I don't know. To kind of get work through that. Wildfire resiliency code, super exciting stuff, not the one. Senate Bill twenty-three, one sixty-six established a wildfire, wildfire resiliency code board within the Division of Fire Prevention and Control. And then they passed H C C R fifteen, zero, seven, thirty-nine, which formally adopted the twenty twenty-five wildfire resiliency code in July this year. And what that means for us is local municipalities must adopt either the Colorado wildfire resiliency code or a more stringent wildfire resiliency code before April first of twenty twenty-six. You be compliant until later than July first of twenty twenty-six. So what that means for us is we only have two areas in town. Technically, three, one of them just it kind of skips a little hole in the town. There, we have to actually work on some compliance things. And it will only touch homes that are renovated or new, or they go to put in new landscaping. Those are the things that will kick off the compliance with the wildfire resiliency code. And so our areas are around East Drive and North where we have some heavier brush. So like Sky High will be a part of that. We'll have to have, follow those rules. Because if it touches the parcel, the entire parcel falls underneath that jurisdiction. And then on the other side of towns, on the south side of town, where we have the grasslands, where we could potentially have a grass fire that would roll into the lariettes and into territorial shit. So those are the two areas in town. And speaking with Gigi and Jean, I believe the easiest way to adopt this is going to be with the overlay district. So we'll add that to the code as a overlay district and just put that portion in and then adopt the twenty twenty-five wildfire resiliency code as written by the Colorado code fire board or whoever did wildfire resiliency code board. Because I don't see any point in going any more stringent what they're already making us do. It's already going to add cost to homes. It's already going to add cost to those areas. So I don't feel like it's important to add any more hardship on the price. Unless you guys disagree, in which case I will add things that you tell me to do. So in order to do that the most effective way, instead of going through and editing our current code and changing an overlay district and all these other things that would have to happen, we're going to try to place it into the new land use code in the hopes that I can get the new land use code through. If we get to the point where the new land use code is not going to be approved in time, we'll have to go through and adopt it just as it is. So I'd like to just adopt it at one time instead of having multiple adoptions to change the current code that we're then going to change again in a few months. So that's kind of where we're at with that one. We are lucky and happy that they changed it from the original namings because it was originally named as a building code, and it would have required us to change our electric code and some other things. So the Colorado Fire Board did actually listen to their decisions when we pushed back on that. We said, but you said if we do these changes, we have to do these other things. And that wasn't their intent. So they changed the name just so there's no longer a building code. So that was nice of them. In addition to that, kind of tangential is the building department. So Colorado, the Rio Grande County staff has reached out and said that they can't, they potentially can't support us anymore on the building department side. So our building inspections would have to come under the city of Santa Luis. And the reason for that is just inundated with projects. In twenty twenty-three, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two, we had forty-two permits. Twenty twenty-three, we had forty-one. And twenty twenty-four, we had seventy-eight. And we have twenty twenty-five, we have twenty-seven so far. We already have three large commercial projects, including two of them that they had to outsource to their party because they weren't able to do them. So Randy has said, hey, we probably need to go ahead and set up our own building department. So what we're working on with that is we don't believe we have enough business to create a full-time F T E. So we'll probably subcontract out to a third party for the building inspections. But that also means we still have to create the procedures, the policies, the paperwork, the permits themselves, sticker of occupancy, all the things that we have to follow to keep those records and those kinds of things. So over the next few months, Michelle and myself will be using other examples to kind of develop those policies and procedures and paperwork so that we can maintain that workload. Thankfully, he's wanting to change over in January, which is our slowest building time because, well, it's cold outside. So we'll be able to kind of slowly ramp up and get that department right. So what we're doing as well in order to help facilitate that is I recently got a local planning capacity grant from DOL. And this one was to put in our GIS program and update our GIS program. Then they came back and said, hey, we have money for A I building plan reviews. Would you be interested in being a pilot for that? And so we're looking at those programs right now where DOL would grant us the money to go ahead and use an A I to begin the review process. So they would take in the plans, it would go through A I, and it would kick back, hey, according to twenty eighteen, this part of the code needs to be addressed. And it would give our, at least the initial review for our contractor. My challenge with that is the first one came back at forty-two thousand dollars, and I can't add forty-two thousand dollars to the city budget. I can't add forty-two thousand dollars. That'd be a thousand dollars for a permit in twenty twenty-two. I can't do that. So one of the key things I'm looking at, I will not ask you guys to do anything that's not going to be sustainable in the future. So we may have to forego the A I portion if it doesn't become something that's tenable and sustainable past the granting period. So we're working through that as well. Hopefully, in the next little bit, I'll have an RFP ready to go out so that we can start working and looking for that consult. Because they'll have to have all their certifications and everything ready to go when one January comes around. Randy did say, Randy Kern did say he wasn't just going to say, hey, it's now yours. And he said he would help us and make sure that we were taken care of through the transition. So if there's something that we're still working through, he said he would still continue to do that for us on a case-by-case basis. So other than that, back to the land use code. So we're kind of getting close. Articles one, two, five, seven, and nine are in final rough draft, pending the minor revisions for the wildfire code. Article three is pending review from Public Works because it's the standards for subdivisions. Articles four and eight are sitting with the city attorney's office. I just gave them back to him after some, some input back and forth. And then Article six is still in draft form. And the reason Article six is still in draft form is it's the procedure chapter, so I have to have all the rest of the chapters complete to make sure that all procedures are completed. So that will be the probably last one to get started. So hoping we can get that done in the near future so that we can get that off the plate. That's all I ask. Questions? Don't do the same, man?
Thank you, DJ.
You said.
City Attorney?
Once again, I'm having to keep my hat on. This is getting to be a habit. Two hours ago in surgery in Salida. So on the twenty-third of July, we had fifty-four cases in uni-court. A lot of the same things, thefts, shop liftings, trespass, disorderly conducts, traffic, and so forth. Nothing too unusual about that. It'll come up quickly again now. Next week, we'll have a docket also. So uni-court is continuing with basically consistency in a number of cases. Sometimes a few more, sometimes a few less. Contract with Dr. Hurley has been signed now. He came into the office, signed the contract. We delivered that, the original over here. And so the city has that now. And this is the Tim's contract with him as the emergency medical services director. I think Josh Hill is to be commended for pushing that. He did the job on that. And so that's completed and done. The M T C. We had to make a special request to Ben Kamovic at at C dot for this because of the turnaround. And as I explained to you last time, we got a real close tolerance from when we have to by charter publish this and when it gets passed. And with the publications being what they are, too. That's a requirement under our charter. So I wrote him about that. Received a letter from him yesterday morning saying I can turn everything around quickly since we've already agreed on language in the Santa Luis ordinance. I'll watch for it and get it approved. So that's good news, I think, for us. That we should be there. So what we'll do is right after we have the hearing on this on the fourth, and it is executed by the mayor and attested by the clerk. We will be ready to send that out. And all we got to do is hit the send button. We'll have that letter already formulated to C dot, and then the clerk will be able to publish in the paper, meet the publication dates. And we should have ourselves a new code. We held a meeting in our office on the nineteenth. our office on the nineteenth. Uh I have a question, I gotta call this meeting. Uh the judge, um Tyler, Cody, uh Nita and myself, uh Gigi had a conflict, I think she couldn't make it. Um and uh we were going over the uh terms of uh how this is going to work, especially on the drug houses. Uh and uh the judge is very interested in following a uh protocol that's outlined in basically the uh type sixteen of the statutes uh for temporary restraining orders, so we went into a quick draft mode on that, I've produced a draft already. Sent that over for comments, probably need some uh different input to it and so forth, so uh I'll be waiting for uh to hear from uh Tyler and uh Cody and uh and Nita and so forth on the any changes that need to be done on that. Um and uh hopefully then we'll have a pretty clear-cut procedure on uh and and along with that will go some forms too, so that we can simplify the process and make it a standardized process when we have these things of what gets done, how it gets done and so forth, so. It's a work in progress, but I see some light at the end of the tunnel on that one. So. Um and um let's see. Uh we had a more immediate issue uh this morning, um and uh this will probably result in a drafting by our office tomorrow morning for administrative search warrant concerning this type of issue. So um we're gonna see how that goes, we haven't had to do that yet, but uh obviously from the officers' reports of uh what has been going on here, um it merits a search warrant. Um I think that's all I can um think of right now. That we've been working on, but that's been the gist of it, so. Have any questions?
Questions, anyone? Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Sitting there, I'm doing it.
Again, I apologize for the way I look today, I was out in the field with the code enforcer and uh we went to the house that we they did it. There, no occupancy was issued yesterday, and and so the warrant that Jean was just referring to um saw chickens. Somebody didn't have their their certification that or their permit to have chickens in their backyard and neighbors are complaining and so had two dog issues and looked at some other blighted houses and so. You know, it's kind of, I'm really excited that DJ and Cody and Nita and Jean, everyone's just taking the the seriousness of looking at our new nuisances and seeing what we can do about it. It's just like, you know, the graffiti that's still on Adam Street by two of our businesses and those owners won't take care of it and get rid of it, and so this will provide tougher teeth in those sorts of things so that we can clean things up. So I'm I'm proud of all of them. Um out at Sky High right now, the job is posted for finding a new director. I've met with each of the employees and they seem content as far as working together and and moving forward. Uh this last weekend, they had a quinceanada that was they were, I think, expecting around seven hundred people. Well, the family then put it out on Facebook and they estimate we had about twelve hundred people. And so I was there on Monday morning to see the the mess that had to be cleaned up because there's you know, broken bottles and there's trash on the floor and and I want to just thank the staff out there. They, after each event, they wipe down all the tables and they wipe down all the chairs and then having to put them all away and and so they've got another large event on this Saturday as well, so. Think I just might go down there myself in the evening and see how things are, how they're holding up. Rob and I met with Excel Energy this last week and they are working with us. We'll be providing four new poles so that I can get holiday lights on the south end of town. And then we're gonna replace the two poles right here on Morris because the wind, it gets really windy, they kind of sway a lot, so I think they've just outlived their life. So I want to thank Excel, we're gonna get that done. This last Friday, uh I was asked to speak with a group. They were here from the University of Denver and they are working, they're trying. And it's, I'm thankful that these universities want to come down and try to figure out rural Colorado. They spent a couple days of a month ago up in Sterling. Then they were in Alamosa and Monte last Friday, Thursday and Friday, and then they're gonna be going to steamboat um here in another month or so. And so they pretty much put together their own agenda, but they're just trying to figure out how do rural communities you know, leverage our resources, where are we, where do we struggle as far as getting additional resources? And so I know they spent time with uh people like Connie Martin with the SLV Health and um the Lor Foundation, they wanted to know how that has impacted Montevista. And the Lor Foundation, Judy went back and added up the grants that they have given just to the city. And I don't know what Yvette's budget is, and I know that she has helped many other entities and schools, nonprofits in Monte, but just the city alone, she's injected two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. The largest recipient has been recreation, and that's how we've been able to replace all of the uniforms and upgrade so much of the equipment. She's paid for volleyball camps and covered the costs so the kids don't have to pay. It it's just been remarkable. And then the second highest has been to law enforcement and what she's done to help improve public safety and equipment for, and like the teams program for our men and women wearing blue. So it's it's been amazing. We're really lucky that the Lor Foundation picked Montevista. The um the school had asked. They've got two big trees on the golf course side. You guys might recall because a constituent came in a year ago and was saying he didn't want them cut down. And so since we got this tree grant, this week we got the trees really trimmed up on that side. Well, the trees themselves look so much better anyway. And I haven't, I've got to call in to Scott Weedham and to see if this school's happy. And then there was another tree on the golf course that I said needed to be trimmed up, it it really hung over like one of the gate entrances into the high school and the way these cottonwoods can snap off. We got that one all cleaned up so that public safety. So our tree grant will probably pay for that. And then finally, you've probably, if you listened to the local radio stations, Bob Richards is having his ribbon cutting of his um new radio station or new, well, it is the new station itself downtown on Adam Street. Uh the ribbon, you've been invited to an event on Friday, the ribbon cutting is at noon on Saturday. And if you haven't poked your head in there, you really need to. Bob worked for KBK, excuse me, KBPI. Rocks that are Rockies, that's his little slogan, um in Denver for quite a number of years. And so he has a lot of signed memorabilia that's all on on the wall and it just looks really cool and you know, he wants people to go in and they can watch them then while they're on the air and um it's kind of fun, so. Might want to do that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Gigi. Go to council, community, city commissioner, council reports. Jason? Victor?
I'm gonna have to, someday, someday I will. It's like the last day of my council session. Leather, sweater and well, I really don't have much, um Gigi said the radio station, we got Neighborhood Watch, put that on calendars now for September seventeenth. So we'll put that pitch in again at the next meeting. Walton, Officer Gilstra? Mr. Knox, Office, Lawrence? It's Preston. I'm starting to feel like Brad, saying something. I will say that. And uh again, if you see something, say something with the Neighborhood Watch. Don't be afraid to say something, even if it's just upon something in the time of the be sure and do it. With that, we'll go uh recess meter. Enjoy the meeting until September four, fourth. September fourth, six P M here at Council Chamber, Monty Strong.
Thank you, listening, this is Penn, thank you.
Thank you, guys.